Test, test. Test, test. Test small mic. Test mic two. Test mic three. Test mic four. Test mic seven. Test mic eight. Test mic five, mic five, test mic five. Test mic six, mic six, test mic six. Thank you.
All right, we resume open session, can everyone stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, does anybody have anything to add to the agenda? Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Joe and Vivian.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 All right, next item, accomplishment recognition. For the month of February, the administration would like to honor the following individuals who've been nominated by staff and selected by the administration for the following awards. Student of the Month, Peter Swiderski, third grade.
Peter, come on up. How you doing buddy? Congrats, congrats. You have a teacher here that recommended you and she's gonna come talk a little bit, okay? I'm gonna get you a microphone. We'll let you turn around here and face everybody. We're gonna, we'll get some pictures in a second here. Okay, go ahead. Rusty Alley?
Well, so Peter, he exemplifies everything you would expect in a Big Hollow student of the month. He, his academics, he excels in his academics, he's intrinsically motivated, he works really hard. But the real reason that I nominated him is because of his big heart. Peter walks in every day, he's got a huge smile on his face, he's like, greets everybody, including me, he's like, hey, how are you doing? Listens when people respond, has conversations with everyone in the class. He's our, one of our biggest motivators. He's someone who's always cheering you on when you're doing something well and then especially when you're struggling, he's there encouraging. A prime example of this is a couple weeks ago, we had our students come up individually and present animal research projects. And Peter, one of the students was really struggling, he had a lot of nerves about getting up in front of a class. And Peter's back there, you can do this, you've got this, I really want to hear about your animal. And even offered to go up on, up to the front of the class and stand next to him while he presented. So Peter's just really selfless and compassionate and I'm really proud and happy that he's part of my class this year.
That's awesome.
Very nice.
This guy even gives me a hug in the hallway when he sees me, so that's a good thing. There you go, you're gonna hold that and we're gonna get a picture with your teacher and Mr. Lyons and I.
Congrats kiddo.
All right, thank you.
Congrats.
Okay, we'll stay up for a second and I'll get it. Okay, next, we have a lot of visitors here. I'm gonna first call up Sunny Morley and Sunny and along with our, our middle school assistant principals do a lot of work overseeing our safe centers. And this group of ladies, I'm gonna brag about you for a second because the work you've done this year has just been outstanding. And the help that you've given kids and families can't be measured. And so we really, really appreciate it, we know it's been hard. And we've been, you know, through a pandemic, you have been there working with these kids every day. And we really appreciate it, it doesn't go unnoticed, it really doesn't. The administrators and building brag about you. And I'm gonna let Sunny because she's really taken, you know, a lead on this project, so go ahead.
I just can't thank you guys enough for helping our students and being there and without question every day doing whatever is best for them, so that makes me so happy and I'm so proud that you are here for the whole school.
Awesome, we're gonna call you up and I don't think we're gonna be able to get a full picture. We'll call you up and get your certificate and just, I really just want to thank you all. So let's, I'll let you call those names and I'll...
Shandra Allen.
Thank you so much, yes.
Is Colleen Duffield here? Orrieen Dunford?
Maureen Dunford?
Thank you, Maureen. Appreciate it.
Morna Morelli?
Morna! Thank you so much.
Becky Tadler?
Thank you, Becky. Appreciate it.
Paula Davidson? Paula DeJork?
Thank you, Paula. Appreciate it.
Alicia Fiori? Alva Gadd?
Thank you, Alva. Really appreciate it.
Lisa Mitt?
Thank you, Lisa.
Davy Ham?
Thank you so much, Davy.
Samantha Hurdle?
Thank you, Samantha. You bet.
Renee Hall?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Carrie Hubbard?
Thank you, Carrie.
Martha Pizarro? Renee Williams? Amanda Machine? Cynthia Matthews?
Thank you, Cindy.
Rosie Morales?
Thank you, Rosie.
Nikki Russell?
Thank you, Nikki.
Wendy Rechek? Scott Newer, did you?
Can't miss you tonight. Thank you.
Karen Suter?
Thank you, Karen. Dane is not here?
Denise Siderman?
Thank you so much, Denise.
Helen Smith?
All right. Thank you so much.
Kiara?
Kiara, round two. Thank you so much, round two.
And Elise, here.
Thank you so much, Elise. I, did we miss anybody? Okay, good, and I will, usually when we have an employee of the month, we allow them an opportunity to speak. Does anybody here wanna share anything about your experience? Anything about your experience to the board, 'cause they... Putting you on the spot here.
Day in, day out, they help kids follow their schedules, make sure they do what they need to do, and just do what they care to do.
It is a challenge. Thank you, and don't feel like you have to stay for the meeting, you're welcome to, but we know you got a busy night, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the Board Member Code of Conduct Review. Vivian, you wanna read it?
Sure, I will recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a board meeting.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Doug and Lauren?
Yes.
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 Do we have any public comments? Superintendent's report, Mr. Gold.
All right, the first one is the monthly board policy review, and I believe this came up at our Culture and Climate Committee, and I'm not sure how it, it was there. How that was the, how the board policy became a discussion there, but it did, it did somehow. And the suggestion was for me to start, on the board policy review, to meet, for me to start picking board policies that relate to topics on the agenda. So that's why you see those are some random policies, but each one of those policies have some sort of relation to something on the agenda tonight. First one was Board Policy 210, Organization Board, Organizational Board of Education Meeting. That's coming up in April, and at the end of the meeting, we're gonna set a date for that meeting. So this just explains when we do that. We have 28 days after the election on April 6th to schedule that. So that's why you'll see, I have suggested a couple of dates to pick from for that meeting. Exhibit, not, or, Board Policy 4180 is the pandemic preparedness, management, and recovery policy, just something to review. Obviously, we're, we're dealing with that every month right now. Board Policy 6190 is just extracurricular activities, which we're talking about athletics a little bit tonight, so I put that policy in there. 620 is the school calendar and day. That's coming up in a, in some form tonight. And then 5200, Terms, Conditions, Employment. So those are just policies I thought I'd put in your package, just so you could take a look at. Next, I'm gonna go to athletic update for Big Hollow Middle School, and I believe Mr. Whipple's here to share a little bit about an update.
So just remembering the idea, I told you that athletic record should be a track and field conference. So right now, we have six schools that are not going to be doing conference play, which only leaves then three plus us, so four schools that are willing to do some conference play. Most of the schools are looking to do some in-house things, so that's kinda what the direction we're going to right now. Track and field is an option along with soccer, so we're gonna be looking to do some things with track and soccer, but it's unclear as to whether we're gonna do a coed season with soccer or have the two separate seasons of boys and girls for the spring. Right now, we're in search of a coach, only because Ms. Lessel had a baby, so she's got other priorities for herself. So we'll make sure that we got that posted, and we get that filled as soon as possible. Let me see here. We are going to do some volleyball, the boys' volleyball this spring, but it's more looking like we're just gonna have an in-house session and not be competitive with other conferences, or other schools. And just to kinda let you know, we did have girls' volleyball and cheer happening. And then wrestling hasn't really been discussed within the conference, but I don't think that's something that's looking like it's going to happen. I think only one school had, said they had wrestling, and they did it virtually with their kids, so it's kinda where we're at.
All right, thanks, Scott. Any questions from the boards on athletics?
Nope.
Thank you. Item C is the Exhibit 10, it consists of a staffing plan for the 2021, 2022 school year. On Exhibit 10, what you'll see is we're trying to staff based on our enrollment numbers. And keeping our class sizes as close to our goals of, you know, our goals are at 20 for K4. And so we're trying to keep as close as we can to that. There's a lot of financial unknowns with the, this pandemic. So right now, you'll see that we've, we've reduced the staff by three teachers for next year, for 21, 22, in three positions in the K4 classrooms. I have, one is, there's one retirement, and we'll shuffle one from another grade level at this point. But we will, as we see enrollment, if enrollment does spike, then we'll be responding to that enrollment spike and get teachers hired, so...
Do we have any idea how many students were down?
We're down close to 100 right now. Yeah, we're down close to 100 students, and I just have no way of knowing if we're gonna get them back next year or not, so...
Thank you, anybody else have questions? Can I please have a motion to approve the final staffing plan for 2021 and 2022?
Option.
Second.
Julie and Vivian.
Yes.
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Pedersen?
Yes.
Batta?
Yes.
Samantha?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, I'm gonna refer you to the screen up here. I'm gonna have some, a presentation I wanna walk you through regarding some, where we're at in just our pandemic school year and, and the schedule that we've been doing. So this is just my update for March 8th. And I'll read through some of this, I won't try to, I'll try not to read every bullet, but some of it I don't wanna skip over. So as we move forward, our focus on providing the best learning opportunity for our students. Both options school year, there are guiding principles that we need to keep in forefront. One, providing a safe learning environment for our staff and students. Two, the social, emotional well-being and health are supported. Three, ensure that we provide the support to meet the needs of specific student groups. And number four, provide consistent, transparent communication to our staff and to all families. So those are kind of the points I wanna keep in, keep up the forefront. In early February, we, we received some CDC revised guidance, I guess updated guidance. Most of it was just the, I would say there's very little changes, but I wanna, it was, it was structured differently to be a little more clear, I guess, in some areas. So regardless of the level of community transmission, it's critical that we use the five key mitigation strategies, which I can say confidently to you that we are doing, doing our best, the best that we can at these, and in our current environment, it's been pretty successful. So using, obviously the use of masks, physical distancing, hand washing, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, and contact tracing. I know that we can get better in some areas, but we have really, all in all, we've put a lot of effort into those five. But the CDC does emphasize two main strategies of masks and physical distancing, that's where they put their main emphasis. So physical distancing becomes a difficult topic, because there's, you know, the six feet is what causes us some issues. And in this, in this guidance, they say establish school policies and implement structural interventions to promote physical distancing of at least six feet between people. In areas of high community transmission, physical distancing is essential. The high community transmission is the key word there, and so, and I'll get into that here in a second. This was something new, they called it phased mitigation strategies and learning models. Basically what they're saying is, and I'll show you in a chart here, that mitigation strategies, face, the wearing of masks and physical distancing, mainly physical distancing, can be, can be phased differently depending on the transmission levels in the community. So that's basically what that's saying, and I'll shift to a chart here in a minute that kinda explains that. In communities with substantial and high community transmission, they're saying that hybrid instruction should be included with maximal physical distancing. Again, fiscal, wearing a mask and distancing are required in communities with high or substantial transmission. So I apologize this, for those that are here, I think probably only be able to see a little better, but the, this chart shows, it's a CDC chart that is new. This came out in early February. And it's, it's tracking two, two data points. One is incidence rates, which we've looked at all year. That's the first column where it says total new, or first row, total new cases per 100,000 persons in the past seven days. And two is the positivity rate. So the far right, where it's red, that's the high transmission. And then the next column where it's orange is substantial, and then moderate and blue is low. So that's their, that's, that's the, so when they talk about communities with substantial or high transmission, that's the orange and the red, the 50 to 99 section, and the greater than 100. Now, if you remember the, the numbers that I was pointing to with the Lake County Health Department, it was like 14, it was a key number. That's an average, daily average, so to get to this chart, you'd have to take whatever LC, Health Department puts out there, and take it times seven. So the Health Department's number of 14, you take that times seven, that's 98, that's the, that's equivalent to that 100 marker there. So that's why the Health Department is using 14 per day. And so the numbers line up, they're just calculated a little differently. So, so anyway, that's the CDC chart, it's very similar to what we've been using. This is our current status right now at Big Hollow, and again, the, the challenge here is where do we get our data from? And is the data accurate? And we have been, about two weeks ago, when the date, when this new guidance came out, the Health Department told us, the local Health Department told us that they were going to eventually, they were gonna kinda take their dashboard off and just refer to the CDC, because things were coming out so fast in the CDC. So I kinda just scrapped theirs, because the data was not coming quickly, it was sporadic. So I scrapped theirs, and there's a link, I think I have it in this presentation, there's a link to a CDC website that gives us these numbers, right down to our county. So I can get, I can pull up Lake County, and I can get these numbers. So the number today, as of today, this morning when we checked, the, the current transmission rate was 94 point, the incidence rate was 94.32 for Lake County. That puts us in the substantial, so we just dipped under the 100. We just dipped from red to the orange column. The positivity rate has been really good in Lake County, it's less than, we're 3%, which is great. The bullets at the bottom are, are taken off of the CDC website, but it says if, if the two indicators suggest different levels, the actions corresponding to the higher threshold should be chosen. So since we're, we have one indicator in the substantial and one in the blue, they're saying that, you know, any, any actions that we take should be considered that we're in the orange. But if you look at our local, the Lake County Health Department right now shows that our rates are down at 10, which we take that times seven, and we're, it'd be like 70. So their number is in the 70s, and the CDC's got it at 94.32. So both of them have us in the substantial column right now. In case you're still looking at that one. This is the table, and I, I do have in this presentation, which I'll email to all of you, I do have a link to the entire CDC document. But this is a table I've pulled out of there, that is, it's a little confusing the way it's written, but I highlighted a column there that says K-12 schools open full in-person instruction, physical distancing, six feet or more to the greatest extent possible. That's if we were in blue or yellow for all, for our two columns. We are, we still have one in the, we have, we're considered in the orange, so we're considered over here, where it does say, if we're following the CDC guidance, it does say physical distancing is required, because we're still in this column right here. And some other, I didn't put the language in here, but they, they do say that if you, if you drop, if we were to drop from here to here, and stay there for several weeks, then we should be able to move into their suggestion here, which that, what I highlighted there opens the door for like, basically them saying that six feet's not required. It's just recommended to do it to the greatest extent possible. And they've said, you know, in a classroom, if, that shouldn't hold you back to have, you can go three to six in a classroom, but just in lunch and stuff, you should, you should try to maintain the six, when kids have their masks on. So that's kinda the explanations I've gotten, but right now, we are still over here in the, in the orange section, according to our current data. So that, that table is a little, that's new, and they have not given us that information up till now. So our current data, we have 11 students in primary that are quarantined, one staff quarantined, 13 in elementary students, one staff, 12 students in middle school, two staff, so a total of 40, with two confirmed COVID cases right now in the district. So when we keep that up to date every day, our nurses collect the data, Dr. King puts it into Excel spreadsheet, and we have that online, so that's available online. I wanted to give you, as we talked tonight a little bit, I wanted to give you an idea of how many students are currently in hybrid, how many, how many are in remote? We are almost right at 60, 40. 40.5% of students are in remotes, and this was as of last week, it changes daily, we do have people kinda going back and forth a little bit. So, but we're right, almost at 60, 40. This is just a kind of a, for you to see, like, this is what we've done this year, and we've bounced around a little bit. We went, if you, just to recall, we went seven weeks to start the school year at a full remote. We went, if you, just to recall, we went seven weeks to start the school year at a full remote. I will, I will own up to that, to mistakes. And I would say that if I made a mistake this year, it was, it was starting in full remote. I wish we hadn't done that. That, that's caused us some issues with our structures. But, but that's what, that's the data, we, you know, the guidance we were kind of given at the beginning by the Lake County Health Department, and we just, until we had more data to know how serious this pandemic was for our staff and our kids, we, we had to go in full remote. Once we opened up in October, you remember, we were only in for two weeks, and then the data just went crazy in the area, spiked all over, they closed everything down again, and we were out for eight weeks. We came back January 19th. We've now been in for 11 weeks. And I can say very positively that we've been in for 11 weeks and have been very successful 11 weeks. So, have we had cases on campus? Yes, we have. To my knowledge, we've had no transmissions on campus. Cases, kids have, kids or staff have come to campus sick, and we've had to quarantine people. But to my knowledge, we've not had anyone get sick here on campus. So, that's been 11 weeks. It will be 11 weeks as of April 5th, which will be a week after spring break. Which, any changes that we would possibly make, I, I wouldn't recommend we make until April 5th. Some districts are holding off to make changes till April 12th, to give two weeks after spring break, kind of a quarantine time. But you, as you can see, we only have eight weeks after school, or after the spring break. We only have, we have eight weeks of school left. So, I show you this to kind of just see what we've done to break up this year, which has been a little disruptive to our families. August, or May 27th is last day of school. August 23rd is the first day for next year, and I, I think we need to fully plan for a full return of students at this time. So, we have three options that we're kind of, the administrative staff's been working through in the last probably six weeks. Option one is, do we just, do we stay with what we're doing? It's working right now. We'll have eight weeks of school left by the time we can make a change. And just, do we steer our attention toward a full return in August? So, that's an option. Option two would be implementing, I'll kind of summarize this, but option two would be implementing an early release schedule every day. At least Monday through Thursday. We looked at this option, I'm going to be honest with you, it just doesn't work well. We, we tried, we've looked at it, and it could work okay at primary elementary, but it would not work well at the middle school for many reasons, but that I don't want to, I can go into if you, if you want. But it just doesn't work real well, and it, if, if we're going to do it, we might as well just be here all day. This is kind of where, where it ends up happening. So, option three is, we would, we would bring all kids back for full days, returning back to the pre-pandemic school schedules. All families would still have an option for full remote learning. So, we still want to make sure, we have 40% of our families in full remote. We want to make sure that we would offer them. So, that's an option as well. I sent out surveys to staff. I sent out surveys to parents. We had 173 staff complete the survey. We had 786 parent responses, which was great. 67 of the respondents are currently choosing blended hybrid. 33% are choosing remote right now. Remember, we are at a 60/40 split with the, with the survey. We had 67/33. For staff, 131 were certified teachers, and 42 were support staff, completed the survey. When I send you this document, and I will, I'll send this out to all of our parents as well, there's links here to see the staff survey results, to see the parent survey results for those that are in remote. And we also have parent survey results for those that are in blended hybrid. I split them out so you could kind of see how the two answered the questions. So, I'll summarize that data in the next few slides, so you, you will see it. Option, the staff survey, an option was, do we remain in the current blended hybrid schedule for the remainder of the school year? 70% of all staff said yes to this option. 73% were certified, 60% were support staff. Option two that for the staff was, do we go to a shortened schedule for four days a week, but bringing all kids back in, in a regular shortened school, school day schedule? 51% of the staff said yes to this option. 45% were teachers. 71% were support staff. Option three was, do we bring everybody back, returning to our pre-pandemic school schedules? 22% of the staff said yes to this option. And, and they had a chance to say yes to all three options. So, it wasn't like they had to pick one. They had a chance to say yes, yes, I'm good with any one of these, whatever they wanted. So, and we did take comments too. So, we took their comments, and we used those to help us with some data we're going to show you in a little bit. So, for the family survey, the question, the first question was, as a summary, that question, what that means is, if the guidance, if we go, basically set aside the CDC guidance and ignore the social, the six feet, just social distancing rule, would you still send your child to school under this option? 85% of the parents who are currently sending their kids said they would. So, of the parents who are currently sending their kids in blended hybrid, 85% said they would. 15% said they would go back to, they would switch to remote. Obviously, the parents who are currently in remote, most of them would not, they're not comfortable sending them now, so they wouldn't obviously be comfortable sending them if we, if we went to less than six feet. Question two was, would you prefer Big Hollow continue with the current blended hybrid model for remainder of the school year, regardless of the guidelines? I think that, so that, in summary, 62% of parents supported this. Again, they could have said yes to both options. Many of them did. They were good with the first option, but they're also good with this option. So, 62% of parents said they were good with this option. 56 of those parents were kids, parents of students in the blended hybrid learning right now. 81% are, were parents of students in remote learning. So, so that's the family data. I'm going to click this link here. So, our administrators put together some data on, that I'm going to, I'm going to discuss a little bit here. You know, I had asked for, I'd asked to, to kind of pull together some pros and cons of what would happen if we brought kids back? 100%. And let's go with some pros and cons. Let's really dive into the weeds on this. Obviously, there are, the benefits of having kids here all day are, are pretty obvious. You know, we get them back to a regular schedule. There's more instructional time. We've listed some things on this page, but it's, it's really, you know, transportation's easier. We've got, we're not having buses on the road all day long. There'll be in, more in-person minutes for kids. So, the, the benefits of being in person are, you know, obviously, it's where we all want to be at some point. So, the benefits are pretty, are pretty obvious on that, on that piece of it. What I was, what I want to do is spend some time talking about some of the challenges that we face. And again, I apologize if you can't read this well. I'm going to try to highlight some. So, some of the health challenges, there will be 15% of our families that don't feel comfortable if we come back right now, that will, that are currently in blended hybrid, that will move back to remote. I will say that I know some families that we have just recently got to come. They're finally feeling safe. I know that they would probably back right back out if we, if we made changes right now. We would have a challenge with isolation space. I know that sounds weird, but we only have so much space in these buildings. And right now, like, this room in here is used as an isolation space when kids come to the office and they're sick. We send them down here. They, we space them out, and then we wait for their parents to come get them. And we, so that's, in each building, we have these spaces. If we bring everybody back, we're going to need these spaces for other things. And so, we're, there's a challenge with isolation space. Not adhering to six feet social distancing is what, one thing that happens with that is that if a student, if a student is become, is a close contact, the, if we are in a six feet social distancing environment, they have a 10-day quarantine. If we're not, they have an automatic 14-day quarantine. So, I, I just found that out a week ago. I didn't know that was the case. I'm going to, I have a slide in a minute that'll show you kind of the impact of that. But we, I gave you a situation last week. We had a student that came to campus that, that was sick. We didn't know about it until the next week. So, our staff had to go back and contact trace for that student. And since we are in a six feet social distancing classroom, we didn't have to quarantine any students. We did have to quarantine a teacher. But we didn't have to quarantine any students because we're in a social distancing environment where we're six feet. Had we been in a classroom with 15 to 20 kids, and three, three feet social distancing, we would have had many families who'd have been calling and saying, your son, your daughter's going to be home for 14 days because they were in close contact. So, so that's, that's going to be a challenge if we put more kids in classrooms. And the time it takes to do that contact tracing, I know, we haven't had to do a lot of it yet, but that, that situation, the one situation we dealt with last week took our school nurse four hours to navigate, to call people, to, to go to each classroom, figure out, so it, it just takes a lot of time. And we don't have a, a large number of staff to deal with that. So, instructional delivery challenges is this next slide. I, I need to, I need to mention something first. When I'm talking about these challenges, I don't want you to think that we can't overcome these, because we can. These are just things that we had to think about as we're making this decision. Are they, are they all insurmountable? No. We can, we can overcome these. It's just, I, these are things that I, that we need to think about before making a decision. Instruction delivery challenges, service to remote learners in K-4 will suffer. I, I say that not in a lack of confidence in our teachers. They're doing, they're doing a great job. And to make a change with eight weeks to go and require serving kids at home and kids in the classroom with the, when we, with the structures that we have in place in the K-4, I personally feel like it's going to be a challenge for our remote learners to get the, the same level of instruction and attention they're getting now. That's, that's, I don't know of any other way to state that. But I'm not saying it can't be done, but that's, that's something that's concerning. We have a shortage of subs. We've been trying. Right now, I have roughly one substitute teacher per grade level. We've been hiring every day. They're on staff whether we need them or not. Usually, they're used somewhere. We've, the last week and a half, we've been reaching out to all of our other subs to see if we could get any, because we know that if there's a change, and we are doing, if we bring more kids on in April, we're going to need more subs because there's going to be more quarantine situations. And we are just not getting them. We are, we, we've gotten one new person. We actually called her in today, because we've got other subs that we currently have that are now covering maternity leaves. So, so we do have a sub shortage. That's a problem. Another schedule change for families and staff and students. We've heard kind of, I've heard through, you know, loud and clear through some communications that I've had, that people are just kind of like, no more changes. We're in a groove finally. We're in, we just don't need another change. And so, I have heard that. A change now will be difficult for our related services, EL and bilingual populations. We have some long-range initiatives. I'm not sure where we're at here on the slide up there. Let me scroll here a little bit. We have some long-range initiatives that we're really working hard on right now. And we just wanted, the, the administrators wanted me to know that any significant change right now is going to put a pause on some of that, because our attention's going to have to be focused to serving in the buildings in a different way. Let's shift to SEL challenges, social emotional learning. We know that our families have dealt with a lot of trauma this year. Some, some stability, I think, would be welcome. Students with high anxiety or on the spectrum are also having trouble with all the change that we bounce back in and out of. And so, that's been something we were a little concerned about. There's some transportation challenges. Little concerned about traffic control on campus if we bring everybody back at the same time, because we will have a large number that won't be riding buses still, even though we, we can work out, we'll go back to regular bus routes. We're a little concerned about traffic there. We are low on bus drivers. We're, we're running very, very low on bus drivers, and those subs are not out there. Right now, we've been fortunate. We haven't had to quarantine bus drivers, but I just wanted to know we're, we're pretty low. I'm going to jump to food service. We are, again, we're, we're a little short-staffed. We have some people on furlough right now with the situation they're in. So, we're a little short-staffed in food service, but we, again, we can make it work. It's not something that, that is going to keep us, keep us from making big changes. But, but it is a challenge for us. Technology challenges, we have some, we have some challenges with technology right now in that if we were to bring everybody back, we, we purchased some neat bars for some of the classrooms. Those worked really well. We've tried to get our hands on more, but they're just not available. So, we can't off, some of the, the teachers that are at the primary elementary right now, they're teaching kids both in-person and remote. Each have one of the neat bars in their room. It's made that a lot easier. And it's been successful, but we can't get our hands on more of those. Everybody across the country is trying to do the same thing. So, I, I will send this, I will send this document out to you as a board, so you can read through the rest of it. I think I've spent enough time on, on some of the challenges that we're facing on this. I'm going to shift back to, okay. I'm going to shift to this, this screen right here. This is a, this is a typical six-foot social distance classroom. And if I click it, so this would be what it'd look like if we do three to four feet. And I just, you'll see, like, here's a COVID, happens in the middle. And when you do, when you do contact tracing, nobody gets quarantined in that situation. So, this is a situation we had last week here. We didn't have to quarantine anybody. In this situation over here, COVID happens, we have to, we have to quarantine all these individuals. And that's, that's, that's something that is, is concerning. So, in, in the first case, one student, the student who is ill, quarantined for 10 days. In the second case, eight additional for 14 days. So, recommendation, so I'm hopeful that the pros and cons information that was shared presents a clear picture of just some of the issues we're, we're facing. I don't want you to think that I'm just saying that we can't do it. We can, we can overcome these things, and it's what you pay us for, and we, we can problem solve. But I, I want, I want you to, want you to be very clear, there's, it's not just a matter of opening doors. There's a lot, there's a lot that impacts. As I look at the data, there's one piece that sticks out. 70% of staff, 62% of our parents support the idea of remaining in our current model for the remainder of the year. To me, what's been expressed to me through emails, talking in conversations, phone calls with many people, the three, and also discussions with our CAC, the three things that mid-side the most were, families feel like they finally have a consistent schedule. We're in a groove. They don't really want us to disrupt it. It's not necessarily welcomed right now, a big disruption. That's been told to me. This is not everybody, obviously. Some people want us to come all the way back right now. That's been a common theme, even from some people who, who I think wish we were back, but know that right now, they don't feel like that's a great decision. There's the increased quarantine issues that I mentioned to you. I think that's a big issue that worries me right now. And then, I, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that 40% of our population right now is remote. And a decision to negatively impact that population would be, would be a tough decision. So, so I focused tonight on survey data, pros and cons, and the current CDC guidance. Those are three things I focused on. Based on that, I, I would recommend that we continue with the blended hybrid model for the rest of the year and just turn our attentions towards the, the three bullets I have there, just to offer a robust in-person summer school options for all students at no cost to parents, which we are working on, and we'll have a proposal to you for April. Plan for a full five-day per week regular schedule starting beginning of next school year. I think that's got to be something that, you know, I think it's, it's, it's something that we, we have to do. Unless we are told we absolutely can't do it, I think that we have to do it. And I also, Dr. Hetzerwitz and I have been working on this. We, we also think that We also think that it's important that we plan for some sort of full remote option for parents next year and one that wouldn't impact our classroom teachers trying to do both. But just have a remote school option. And I'm actually talking to a couple of local school districts to see if we can combine forces on that. So those are three things that I feel like could go along with my recommendations, that I just feel like we would be best served for our kids right now to not disrupt their lives again. We're in a good groove and so my recommendation is staying in the schedule that we're in, finish out the school year and start focusing on what we can do to make sure that we're back to full normal. If we can't, if you want to finish, if the board doesn't feel that's a good direction, I would say that the early release option is not a good one and we would just have to go full back. We tried to explore the early release, it just doesn't work very well. So I'm up for questions, concerns. Yeah, Julia.
I have a question. So I was looking at the survey results and you couldn't see any comments. I don't want you to read all the comments, but was there anything different than what you put on there for the comments in the survey?
On the comments?
Yeah.
A lot of the comments, we took the comments and I have to give Dr. Fitman, Dr. Hetzschewitz, Christine Arts, and Dr. King some credit for that, that pros-cons list came from a lot of comments that were received. They took the comments from the parents, comments from staff, and we just kind of, they tagged them and kind of took common themes and pulled those together.
Why are the numbers so different on that one? So it says 94. Mathematically, I'm just not sure how it works because how can the incident rate be so high but yet the positivity rate is so low?
I don't know. Yeah.
All right. And then why, why the shift from the focus? The health department seems like it's picking whatever the highest number is. Instead, like before, when we sat through this however many months ago, it was always the positivity rate. Positivity rate, positivity rate, that's what we drilled into our heads.
Well, we were drilling incidence rate for the whole time. And then in December, we just, I think we all kind of said, or at least I know I did, was just, we just felt like we had to get back. And so we kind of ignored the incidence rate at that point.
I thought that was the positivity rate we ignored because that was...
No, that incidence rate was through the roof.
But so was the positivity rate at that point, right?
It was high, yeah. Our health department, now the governor has shut things down based on positivity rate, for sure. Illinois is focused on positivity rates more than the incidence rate. But we, our health department was really focused, that was that 14 number I kept going off of. 14 was their number and that was that incidence rate number. But I can't, I don't know why the positivity rate's so low and our incidence rate's still higher. It seems unusual to me, too. And I don't know why that is. And I agree with you. I'm as frustrated as any, I feel like we are being bounced around to different data sources. For a long time, the health department's, local health department's data wasn't even being updated. And so the positivity rate was showing like a 25% and they said ignore it because it's not accurate, so we just kind of quit looking at it. And then, so then they pointed us to the CDC website and said just go by this. So that's what I've been doing. And then now they're starting to update their site. So, and it's a little lower than CDC one.
So looking at the, one of the, of course, there was said, on the chart, I thought I remember there being like 90 kids in second grade, for example, that are hybrid. We currently have nine teachers. So does that mean that each class has like 10 kids in it?
So that would mean on average...
So they're split up between day and night. There's five in the morning and five in the afternoon?
No. They would have, so they would have, if they had 90 in hybrid, they would have an average of 10 in their classroom in the morning. And then in the afternoon, they would be serving their remote kids. So the other, the kids that are remote...
But then when they're, are the, right, but then, so we have two sessions, not all 90 are coming in the morning. So there'd be 45 divided by nine, five kids...
No, we've actually pushed them all, we've pushed them all to, so in most of the grade levels, with the exception of like two teachers in elementary and two in kindergarten, with the exception of them, what we've done is we've taken all those classes and if they've got 20 kids in their class and 12 of them are hybrid and eight of them are remote, we're putting 12 of them in the classroom in the morning together, all of them together, so the teacher's teaching those 12 students. And the remote kids are home doing asynchronous learning. And then the kids who are in class go home and the teacher focuses their attention on the students that are remote for the afternoon while the kids that were in-person in the morning are doing asynchronous work.
Okay.
So that's how they're serving them. It worked out number-wise, we were able to do that, with the exception of one third grade, one fourth grade, and two kindergarten. And that's where we put neat bars in those rooms and we put extra adults in there to help with, to help those teachers serve those kids, both groups. That's what we're doing now.
And one of the things you talked about was like the quarantining. And it's, you said if we're at six feet, kids are supposed to quarantine for 10 days? But we're not, but you just, but then before that, it was said like we just had the incident at school and we didn't have to quarantine any kids.
So if we as a school are doing six-feet social distancing, but somebody comes sick and like they were on a bus together or something and we had to quarantine a kid, they only have to quarantine for 10 days because when they come back here, they're still six feet from everybody. Does that make sense? If...
So in the areas where they're not...
They don't, we don't have to quarantine them if they were in a classroom and a kid's sitting six feet away, we don't have to quarantine them.
Okay, so the 10 days only applies for the kids that are on the bus?
It only applies if for some reason, these two kids were not six feet apart, even though we set it up that way that they were. If Johnny says, hey, I was with Jimmy last night in my house and we were doing this, so we got to quarantine Jimmy, we only have to quarantine Jimmy for 10 days because when he comes back here, he's still six feet from everybody. So that's what that means.
Are there any, can the kids go get tested or rapid tested and if they prove negative, do they get to come back earlier? Or is it 10 days no matter what?
No, it's automatic, yeah, automatic 10.
Okay.
Automatic 10.
Is that because they can show symptoms?
Yeah.
In that range?
They can show symptoms up to those number of days. And I didn't know about the automatic 14 until last week, but...
I don't know. For me, it seems like, this is just my thoughts, the proposals, I understand them. It just seems that we either take the one that we currently have or we're hurting students and the other two. And I, that's, I guess that's my biggest concern is I don't ever want to hurt a student and it's kind of sad that it's come to this, honestly. I don't know why. I mean, it just, for me, that just, it doesn't sit well. I mean, I think for myself, it's, we put believing in higher standards on everything that we do. For this one thing, I think that we didn't do that for the kids. We just got by and I don't know. That's my, reading this today, that was my biggest thought coming out of it. I mean, I get it is what it is, but I don't know. That was my honest feeling.
I appreciate you being honest.
I feel like there's no good decision. I'm in favor of just keeping it how it is now with the blended and hybrid, but maybe we can do better with some things in supporting the needs of our specific student groups. I know some people are concerned our students don't have enough work to do. So can we do something?
And I hear you on that because I've heard it, too. And then on the same token, like last week, I got an email from a student who was just overwhelmed because he's got too much.
Right.
You know, like, the student was really, really upset, eighth-grade student. He goes, all I'm doing is homework all night. I can't keep up. You guys are killing me. And, you know, the middle school administrators immediately addressed it and kind of tried to get the students some help. And I, so it's hard because this, you're right, there's no, I've never been at a point where I don't, you know, where I feel so helpless with some of this because I do have some families that say we need more and I've got some kids that are just dying on the vine.
I think students, parents, and teachers are overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Very overwhelmed.
I agree.
I don't disagree. There's a lot of anxiety in developing this even recommendation because I just wish we could just hit a reset button and just not even be dealing with this right now, but fully planned on being able to tell you, I think we're good to go, come back. But I just, the more I look into it, I just don't, I don't think it's a good thing for our kids, even though I know that sounds crazy. But I want to reiterate, all those things I shared that are challenges, I'm not telling you we can't overcome that. We can. We can, we can make it happen. It's just, I just don't know if it's, if we're gaining enough in eight weeks just to put kids in class, if we're getting, if it's, I don't know if we're gaining enough to say that it's worth the disruption for those kids and their families, but...
Like you said, like schedules would change, like bus schedules would change.
Yeah.
My concern is buses, if they're in the lunchroom, yeah, they might take them off while they eat. Maybe they'll forget and start talking to someone next to them.
We just have, right now, they have a good feeling for procedures. Kids have been great. They've been great. They come here, their behavior's been great, they follow the procedures, they've been, you know, so that's what's, so it's hard to disrupt because it really is working well, that piece of it. So the more we dive into it, that's just kind of where we all landed, but...
I mean, it's a hard decision. Go ahead.
Is there anything we can do to make it better for, like how Julia said, that can we make it better for the rest of this year then, if we stay at the schedule?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, yes, we can. I think the issue that, it's something, you know, we have an administrator's meeting Wednesday and based on what will happen tonight, it's going to drive a lot of our conversation. We can just really start talking about that. What are we seeing that, where are we seeing that we can get better? And, because I know, I know we can, but I think I'm going to need to kind of, you know, have, put all of our administrators around the table and just talk about that and see where we, where we think that we can improve in the last, in the last two months.
Is there any way to increase the size of safe school for the parents that need extra help, like they're at their wit's end?
I do think that's an option, yeah, for middle school. I don't know about primary elementary. We've got a lot of kids over there right now. So that one's pretty full.
Okay.
I think that there's probably, probably some room for middle school that we can maybe do something though.
I think some parents are just really struggling.
Okay. Primary elementary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Really struggling with what? I couldn't hear you.
It just...
For support.
The support. Just getting off.
For primary elementary.
Especially if they have multiple kids at home.
Yeah. So I had to just jot some things down and write some down because I was a little bit of everywhere and I know this is a hard, hard thing, so I just, I wrote it down so I didn't forget anything. So I feel that staying in the blended hybrid is the best option for the big hollow community right now. I just think everyone is exhausted from everything that has happened this year. If we can provide some consistency to everyone, then that's what we should do. To disrupt the students', families', and staff's lives once again would not be beneficial enough, especially for only eight weeks. The students I have talked to like the way things are because they have a system in place. They don't want to have their schedules changed again and then possibly back again. I think we need to provide students', families', and staff with some stability. There are too many factors to consider if we went back full day, such as the increased quarantine issues alone would cause many challenges, not to mention the negative impact to all our remote learners, which makes up 40% of the student population. And that's just to name two big ones. We need to listen to the data from our survey because that's a large voice from our community. I understand that all families will be happy with this decision and they feel their frustration. I wish there was a solution that would encompass all. The situation is not perfect for anyone. I just hope everyone realizes that we're doing our best to find the balance. Let's finish the school year with consistency and a unified common goal for full day in the fall.
Very well said. And you should have done a presentation.
So if we can't do this now, say we didn't, say we just took out the fact that we had eight weeks left, how are we going to go do this in the fall? If it's the same?
So one of the, I'm glad you brought that up. Like I mentioned at the very beginning, if I, I feel like I made one big mistake this year. It was the beginning of the year. I wish we would have been hybrid. We did have some structures in place for primary elementary where we had remote teachers already in place because it began, but then when we decided to go full remote, we decided not to have the remote teachers because everybody was remote. That was a mistake and I acknowledge that. And so, because a shift right now to full in-person would be easier if I had remote teachers over there, K-4. It'd be easier. And if I, if I make remote teachers now, I got to take all the kids' schedules and jumble them up and kids are going to switch teachers and I just don't know if that's, like I said, we could do it, but it'd be messy. And so to answer your question, in the fall, we will do it because we will start the year, I mean, if things are as they are right now, we start the year full go and we just go.
Even with a six-feet social distancing?
I think we have to. And we just have to, I think we have to and we have to just, we have to create some sort of online learning option for parents that want to stay home, but it will be a longer commitment for them. It won't be one where they can be in it for a little while and choose to come back and then maybe go back. There'll be two completely different schools. Is the way I kind of see it right now, but I don't know how it'll end up, but, you know, I want to give those parents that option, but I need my teachers here to focus on those kids in front of them. Because I think I'm wearing people out right now with, you know, I know the stress levels are high for our families and our teachers, but, so, but yeah, Lauren, that's, I hope I answered your question there.
So the survey was sent out to all the families?
Yeah.
Which is 1,700 or...
Yeah, it goes out to over 4,000 email addresses. So by the time you look at multiple parents and, so we had, you know, almost 800 responses. It was actually a pretty good response rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
I think it went out on social media right away because there was, there was responses coming in in a hurry, so. Any other questions? Okay.
Nope. All right. Can I please have a motion to approve the recommendation for Mr. Gold regarding our options for the instructional scheduling for the remainder of the 2021 school year?
Motion.
Second.
Tiffany and Doug.
And that is which option?
Yeah. Yes, which option?
Well, his recommended, his recommended option is the blended hybrid model.
The stay in the blended... I just, in the motion, that's why we're asking.
I did, I said recommended motion.
Option one.
Recommended option.
Sure. Okay. Yes.
Yeah. No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right. Do anybody have any questions on the February employment recommendations?
Nope.
Can I please have a motion to approve the February employment recommendations?
Motion. Second.
Julia and Lauren.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Does anybody have any questions on the resolution regarding the dismissal of the fourth-year non-tenured certified personnel for school year 2021, 2022?
Nope.
Can I please have a motion to approve the resolution regarding the dismissal of fourth-year non-tenured certified personnel for school year 2021, 2022?
Motion.
Second.
Go on, Julia.
Yes.
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 Yes. Anybody have any, we accepted a resignation from Madeline Redding, a second-grade teacher effective May 28th. We accepted a resignation of Mary Disney, middle school, 12-month secretary effective March 4th. And we expected a resignation of Shawna Meertz, third-grade teacher effective May 28th. Anybody have any questions on FOIA requests?
No.
No.
Anybody have any questions on the administrator meeting agendas? Yes. Anybody have any, we accepted a resignation from Madeline Redding, a second-grade teacher effective May 28th. We accepted a resignation of Mary Disney, middle school, 12-month secretary effective March 4th. And we expected a resignation of Shawna Mertz, third-grade teacher effective May 28th. Anybody have any questions on FOIA requests?
No.
No.
Anybody have any questions on the administrator meeting agendas?
No.
No.
The next regularly scheduled boarding will take place on Monday, April 12th, 2021, with closed session beginning at 6:00 PM. We need to schedule a special board meeting, preferably on April 27th or the 28th, to close any business before this current board and to seat new members of the board after the April 6th, 2021 election. So can we look at our calendars and see what we got?
I'm fine, either day.
Either one.
It would be easier for me the 28th because I'm off work.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, me too, 28th.
What time do we want to do? Do you want to start at 6:00 PM?
Yeah, 5:00.
What time?
Six.
All right. The IASB will be offering a Starting Right Board Self-Evaluation Workshop for all board members on June 9th, 2021. The time is to be determined. And does anybody have anything else to add? Can I please have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Tiffany and Vivian. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?